Ms. Chairman, I do have a couple of things. First, we usually handle under personnel a discussion of town report preparations, honorees, the cover.
Yep.
So I'd like to put that in executive session. And then also, I think we may have some need to discuss the solar project among ourselves as well.
Is that contracts?
That's contracts, yeah. And or legal, yeah. Okay.
All in favor say aye.
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 Close. And any need to amend the agenda?
I haven't got anything.
Motion, don't you?
Do I need to formally amend it if we shift stuff around?
No.
No, okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, and then the minutes of December 2nd. Any have anything? Okay. Motion to adopt?
You don't.
You don't?
You don't.
Because you signed them. Gotcha, thank you.
We have to sign them.
Yep.
Anything on the orders?
No, you gotta send them.
As to the orders while you're doing that, Madam Chairman, there are, there is an original order and two debit card purchases that you've seen. There's also the new order tonight. But I wanted to point out that there'll be three weeks before our next meeting, January 6th. But I talked with our bookkeeper and she thinks it's highly unlikely there'll be a need to get any interim signatures before the 6th.
Okay.
Rearrange your seating. Somehow.
On the orders, magic minus zero sixty-two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, what might that be?
Oh, I know, I circled that myself, I don't know.
No. Ah, yes. Innovative Surface Solutions is the company that we use to give us the material with which to treat our salt and sand or the so that's what they use to mix.
Probably should know that.
No, I don't think I've seen it.
No, it's never.
Described in that way.
And there's another one right below that, a couple of items. Grand Rail Repair Accident sixteen-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Now, is that something that we might get reimbursed for maybe?
Yes, we're gonna have a claim against the motorists. We haven't done that yet. We do have the invoice for.
Yeah, I was suspicious of that, but I thought I'd ask.
Yep.
I've got a question on the orders from tonight. Uh, we've paid Casella a hundred-and-ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. The project isn't done, we pay them as they go along?
That's true.
Oh, okay, all right.
Those payments. And our, our resident engineer processes those payments confirms that all of the materials have come and the quantities as requested, the invoice from Casella. And they can recommendation to us, it's time to pay. Essentially here, for some of the work, but also for some of the materials like the blocks that have been put down already.
Typically, they request it every month.
Okay.
That's probably spelled out in the contract somewhere.
It is, it is. And also, as soon as we get enough, you know, invoices to justify it, and certainly this kind of invoice does justify it, we immediately turn around and submit a request for reimbursement from the grant to get our eighty percent back.
Kind of a chain reaction thing.
Right, that's right.
If nobody else score the chain.
The state's been good for it so far.
Anything else on the orders?
Yeah, uh, thunder towing. You've got the police truck, oil change and inspection. And then you got the Durango oil change. And then you got police truck oil change again. You changed the oil twice in a day or two?
New question? Thunder towing. Twelve fifteen is the invoice, the work date, the ship date is twelve fifteen. So that's yesterday. New parts, oil filter, new parts, five W twenty castrol synthetic motor oil. Tire change, tire change over at mileage twenty-five thousand. That's for the nineteen Ram. For the Durango, there's another invoice, premium oil filter, five W twenty synthetic motor oil, tire change over, shop time on TPTIPM changeover for warranty replacement. DF seat lower plastic cover securement with hardware. Then there's another invoice for a different amount for the nineteen Ram, severe duty oil filter, tire rotation, vehicle inspection.
Okay, so this is where I have a question. You got, so the first one on the police truck, did that have an oil change?
Oil filter.
Why are you?
And motor oil, one quart.
So you changed the filter and oil. What date was that?
The date of the invoice, and it says ship, so that's the invoice date, is twelve fifteen-twenty.
Okay, and then what's the next one?
Well, the other Ram service was nine-ten-twenty.
Nine, oh, so that's September, okay, all right, well.
Held up until they.
Okay, because it didn't make any sense, you were changing the oil twice in the same day. Okay.
Anything else? It looks like he might have something.
No, I'm good, no, I'm good. No, I was just.
And this one?
Um, we've got a chair for you right inside the door if you'd like.
Thank you.
For distance from everybody.
Hello, John, John? Hello?
Hello.
Hello, this is Ernie Clarahue. I was, I was a little late to sign into the meeting. Do I have to announce myself or what?
Uh, no, I think you just did.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if that was required.
But thank you for letting.
I've been listening in.
Okay, good.
Get this one?
I'm not tripping over a cord.
Alicia, in terms of visitors, you might want to prioritize.
Yeah, it's farm.
Yep.
John, what are we up to now? Are people signing orders?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I could hear their pens working, but I wasn't sure. It's rather silent.
We should offer that to PEG TV, a radio alternative to the coverage.
I can hear their minds working too.
Not very well.
That goes way, yeah. Yes, definitely has good hearing.
But when you don't come here in person, you don't get all the chocolate chip cookies.
Oh, well, save a couple for me.
Play the jar, Ernie.
Okay.
delivery on the way home. All right, we'll skip over to new business and, uh, yeah, we'll hear what the village farm holiday is.
Great, they're going to be a little later on.
Sorry, I'm just gonna figure while you're here.
Gisella, could you actually bring up the drawings? So leave a letter on Zoom can see them as well.
I would love to. Hello, everybody, I would love to, but, um, screen sharing is disabled unfortunately, so I.
Oh, mine, I can fix that.
Hang on.
You can fix that?
Yes, I can.
You can all see it as well as I can then.
You'll be able to see it, because it doesn't mean much if you can. We have four purposes for being here. One is update on the architectural and site design of the project. The second is what we've been doing so far on, on Bryant applications and successful grant applications. Another is we want to apply for a planning grant. And there's also another, I would say, a better places grant that we're thinking about applying, which is more for a park idea. So the first part is really just talking about this. The up-down design and see.
Give me just a second.
Okay, I will hold on.
I don't know why it's not letting me.
So you probably have to go to security and then say, uh, oh, okay.
Let's get the test equipment.
Unfortunately, there's not a, we don't have an option to, I don't have an option to disable or enable right here.
Yeah, yeah, it's possible that you have to do that in general and go to your security settings and you might not be able to do that really quickly.
My bad guys, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Something allow participants to something, but moved away for a read it.
Oh, here we go.
There you go.
Gisella, can you try that now?
Uh, it still says host disabled, um, screen sharing, sorry.
Unfortunately, I think I may have to restart the meeting or she could send it, she could email it.
How important is it for us to see your screen?
Well, there's, there's, there's people on Zoom that will never see this.
Oh. Split it in front of John. Put it in front of John. All right, yeah.
But it's also, so I have to show it two different directions. Can you see John?
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I don't need to be shamed, cancel it.
So, just a few highlights of the design, I'll just throw it this way, I'll take it down. Let's do both, is that, um, we're focusing on, the other part of the design is for, for the ground floor, the child center. And that's gonna be on the, on the level in the basement. And that's really kind of the, one of the largest needs we see in the community is an early child center, from zero to three-year-old kids, infants, toddlers. The first floor would have the community space and retail. It also has, what we've done is wrapped around the front porch all the way around. That allows us to provide handicap access from Elm Street side onto the porch and around to the side. So we have handicap access both at the ground floor and at the first floor levels. And the second floor level is still in design, we're expecting to have some office spaces, maybe after-school activity type stuff. But as far as construction planning, it's a little bit further down the road. So it's kind of a, the architectural rendering of how it looks. This, this is looking pretty good, I think it's really a nice design. If anybody can see it, it's a, it's kind of a layout. So it's a, an interesting layout for, for the community. The site plan is also moving along, it's a so we have, you know, the main entrance will be the southern entrance, not the entrance next to the building, looping around. There will be parking along this roadway where envision is being grass and only is overflow parking. We want to keep the area as green as possible for most part and have most of the parking be nearer the barn. There'll be parking spaces above, for the retail space, the handicap parking here, handicap parking for the childcare center and some tree design. So let's kind of move in, about an idea of where some things are. This is the ground, yeah, we're using one ground.
Okay.
So the ground floor level is the childcare center. And it's designed really for only twelve infants, four babies, eight two-year-olds type space. So it's, it's completely isolated from the rest of the building and so it's a very secure location.
They go over the back door.
Yeah. And then, um, the first floor design, the rear of the building is community center. Center area has the hallways, restrooms, stairway to the second floor. And then the Elm Street side is where we envision to have retail space available. Either it's one retail space or two retail spaces, that can be decided later, but that's kind of the status we're on in this design. So we've made quite a bit of progress on thinking how this is gonna look and getting the drawings done. So I think it's looking pretty good and we're pretty, we're pretty happy with the design. And I think it's a, it's a working design. Just, does it have any questions about? And don't get.
Okay, sure. Okay, so we are really happy that we've had the opportunity to go for a planning grant. Now, we've had some grants in the past to do some of the professional work that you see here and some in-kind donations. Excuse me. Okay.
Actually have copies of those as well, I'm sure.
Yeah, so basically, you know, we're talking, you know, maybe five, six thousand dollars a pop for those. This is through the state, it's the Agency of Commerce, it's called the Vermont Community Development Program. And this is a planning grant. And what that means is anything before the shovel goes into the ground. So we need some more professional work done to know what the costs are for everything. For example, um, we're taking a look at a few more architectural, electrical, plumbing, structural, landscaping, some civil engineering works. And then, of course, we'll have a better idea of our costs once they get those plans done. So getting.
Can I distribute these?
Yeah.
I have these sheets.
John, you can get those.
I think I.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, those were in our package.
Yep.
Okay, good.
So this one says on the top of it, December sixteenth, Vermont Community Development Grant Program, okay. So basically, they want us to have a project. There's four different program areas. And one was housing, economic development, public facilities or public services. And the best one matched for this was public facilities, because there's gonna be so many people utilizing, you know, different age groups and, um, you know, just different activities that have gone, that we planned for at the Pittsburgh Village Farm. So public facilities was one of them. Economic development, yeah, you could say somewhat, you know, if you've got some offices, if you've got three staff at childcare center to start with. Let's see, so what we need to do is prove that we have an LMI, which is really low, moderate income. So they want to get this grant, they want to know that we're gonna be serving some of that population. So basically, we've looked at the senior population and we've, I've talked, well, I've called where they have a senior lunch and John and I have talked about seniors in town. And of course, I've looked at the IRS website where you can get a look at how many seniors that you have based on your zip code. I hadn't, you know, that occurred, but that was great and I could see the income levels and whatnot, so we're right on target there. And, let's see what it, okay. Okay, so then we need to have a public hearing for this. And we, the target date for that was January thirteenth. And we're hoping that this group will approve this, will go along with this.
But did you want to have that in concert with a select board hearing, a select board meeting? Because our meetings are the sixth and the twentieth.
Ooh.
Okay.
So we could either get you in if you wanted on the sixth or the twentieth.
It has to have a fifteen-day warning and newspaper ahead of, ahead of the meeting.
Okay.
We're getting pretty tight with the sixth.
What, what is your deadline for having accomplished the public hearing?
No, five days before the ninth, so like the fourth. So public, so it would be okay, you can't submit the application until five days after the public hearing.
What is the deadline for the application?
Nine February.
Oh, February, yes. So even the twentieth?
Twentieth would actually work.
Okay, all right, we'll put that in.
And it would be better for us to have at the same time as the select board meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so we'd also be getting letters from Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And we'd have an environmental review release, okay? And we'd have some assessment on the environment so far, that will continue. And we've talked about what the purpose is. And I think that's about it. Do you have any questions?
Well, I gather you're here just because we had talked earlier with Lori Byram and I think Bear Morgan about the notion that you'd like the select board to be in a position to state that they, that there's community support for your project, right? And with no economic or financial burden on the town.
Absolutely not.
But simply to state we support your goals and your project, right?
So this has a ten percent match for this grant and that would come from us, not from the town. But also this grant, eligible applicants are Vermont towns, cities, except for Burlington. So it's not non-profit. So we would have to apply through the town district.
Hey, I, I have a question, does the barn, does the barn have to come down, Louis?
No, that's not.
Yeah, we're just dealing with the farmhouse right now.
Okay, I thought the barn represented a hazardous area, that's all. Is there, is there anything with that?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, okay.
As far as, as far as holes in the floors and people falling through?
Yeah. Those sort of things.
Button up, so they can't get in there.
Well, yeah.
Secure it, that's all.
Secure it, yeah.
Okay, so you haven't gotten to that point yet, okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Yeah, the barn is not really on the agenda immediately. You know, at some point in the future, we will definitely want to deal with the barn, but it's a, the farmhouse is our objective.
Right.
And that's some, and it's not a large enough project right now.
I thought, I thought that's what the insurance company would call an attractive nuisance.
We're hoping it's not a liability but an asset in the future.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we wanted to get started on that childcare, you know, the childcare is a big part of this, you know, the agricultural hub was another part of it, but we really want to get that farmhouse. Do you have any questions at all?
I do, I, um, I thought I saw something in here, not in this, but that there would need to be surveys, but is that, do you not need to do the surveys to establish a certain percentage of lower income because you found it through the IRS?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know, not only the IRS, um, I've got a whole list here of the community, it's the American Community Survey that I went through too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhat related to the census.
It's something more, it's, does it like, so a census is every ten years, this was two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, but the IRS one was two thousand eighteen, so that was even clear. You know, and I even called, like, the village manager, found out how many residents are there and what their income and their income, it's, it's low to get in. And that's great because they're right across the road.
Yeah, really.
From there, so, yeah. Yeah, it looks like, you know, we're on target and, you know, we've really networked with these agencies, you know, we've been at this for a couple of years now and that's how long it takes to really get this far, to put in a state grant of this size. And then from here, we'll just continue on with more fundraising and, and take a look at more grants.
So it sounds like you'll need to get some kind of newspaper notice.
Yes.
Of the public hearing.
Yes.
You might need to help either write it or review what you got.
Yeah, and this is, it's very specific. There is a very specific form that you have to use.
Okay.
And so we, yes, we would like to have your assistance, but our expectation is that we'll provide you with everything you need to submit.
Okay.
And so that minimize anything you have to do personally.
Fantastic.
And we've been, you know, through our networking, we've been successful, through Reddick and Chamber of Commerce, we received a three-thousand-dollar grant to help do the architectural drawings to the point where we can get Neil and Green, which is now working with us, they've given us some time, they're working pro bono to process it, to see what this is gonna probably cost to do. And we're breaking down in four phases, trying to make this thing manageable. And so we've gotten a lot of help and a lot of support, which is helpful and it's good.
And if, if you would like to get on our email list, we can keep you updated. I can grab a piece of paper, if you want to.
I could send you all of their email addresses if you'd like.
Yes, that would be even better.
Joe is somebody you might want to work with on the phone, because he has an email through the lumberyard, but I don't know if you want to be contacted through the lumberyard or through a phone call. Do you have a preference?
Probably through the mill yard.
Okay, mill yard, okay. I'll give you that one too.
Oh, good, thank you. Okay, great.
Another item for, just for information, it's the second sheet of paper. And this is a, it's called Better Places Grant, it's a, it's just come out, it's, there's a little bit of money available for towns to, um, to help out its, um, help communities reimagine, reopen public spaces, safe dining, shopping, recreation, window shopping, unique places. So we're looking at opening up the, um, the farm land and looking at making a park out of it, that's our objective. So we're looking at some way to get some funding to take portion of the property and turning it into a village park. And it'd be not a park like the rec facility, it's not a competition, it's gonna be a park with gardens, walkways, there's a playground there now, there's the community garden, but it's expanding the area and developing, um, well, we wanna, we're gonna get a design to get something for the future. So that's what this is about, we're looking at applying for this one as well. So I think having a park in the center of the village would be a pretty good idea. Last thing is we have drawings, we can, I don't know if it'd be a benefit to the town to have a set of our drawings in the town.
Be happy to have them and we could store them and we could let the people know that if they want to see them, we can do it.
So I'll make a set of twenty-four by thirty-six and have them brought here, so you can have them available if anybody wants to see what we're doing, how we're doing it. And, uh, John also have a PDF set, I can just email a PDF.
Very good.
Probably had. Questions?
Yeah, do you need something from us?
You need a motion, don't you, for the town to?
Yes.
Yeah.
To authorize a.
Authorize, yeah.
So move.
Second.
And to, and to.
And to apply for the grant.
For the grants, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we really appreciate it.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Look, bud.
So.
Bye.
Goodbye.
Bye.
See ya.
Goodbye, Mr. Goodroll.
See ya. There you go.
Hi, how's it going?
Remember Will Vevay, Vevay?
Yes.
Yes. My solar project on the, on the Range Rover.
All right, well, I guess we'll get to you next.
Great, uh, good evening. I had a issue with the printer and I'm hoping that that.
Great, uh, good evening. Um, I had a issue with the printer and I'm hoping that that plan that I sent you this afternoon.
I got everybody a copy. I don't know how much time they've had to look it over, the most recent version. The only problem I had was printing off the map. My OB wouldn't recognize it and wouldn't process printing a map.
Okay.
But we have the other documents.
Alright, then I apologize upfront because it, the map is what I want everyone to look at. Do you have a way to pull up, can we do a print quickly?
Where, where can I get it?
Um, he has.
This would be quite a production. I think I'd have to go into my office and then try to figure out a way to zoom from my office to there. And we already established we can't see my screen anyway.
Send the photo.
Yeah.
But it would take like 10, eight minutes for you to log in and everything.
We already know what you had in mind for vegetation.
I can do a pretty good explanation then. And, um, just my apologies on my printing staff who, and so, alright. To bring us all up to speed on where we're at with the project, we're basically finished the interconnection study. I'm supposed to have that back from GMP on the 22nd. And by all accounts from our back and forth, that's looking very good and going to be complete. On the application side, um, we've basically drafted everything for the application to put the application, um, in, uh, in fairly short order. On the work for the vegetative management easement, what's been recommended by our attorney to put forward is an option agreement, which is what I sent out in draft form, um, last week. Out the exhibit B, which is the map that we don't have printed out today. The reason for the option agreement is that we don't have to enter into anything absolute until the project actually becomes a reality to be built. So it's a, protects both us and the town. And I, I think it's a good format. And the payments that have been promised are triggered when we actually exercise the option for the actual easement.
Just to summarize, um, you've suggested you'd be willing to make some sort of $250 good faith payment
Oh, yeah.
toward, toward the easement. And then they discussed $10,000 payment would only be payable if and when your project is approved and you proceed with it.
Yep.
Uh, and then meanwhile, you've offered the town $1,000 toward our legal costs to review the proposed legal agreement.
Yeah, in addition to the $250, another $1,000 to cover legal review, there will be a few hours for your attorney to go through that. If it goes over a few hundred dollars, up to that as well, but that is, uh, our offer to make sure that there's really no financial burden on the town to review this.
John, John, excuse me, John, is, is this concerning the Plains Road development or the Kendall Road development?
This is the Plains Road solar project where they'd like to cut a few town trees along the perimeter.
Uh huh, okay, good. Just wanted to know where you were. Thank you.
When you have a chance to review the fully engineered, uh, map with the easement areas, what we discovered with further engineering is where the walking path splits at a Y, which is basically where the, uh, property meets at the property corner. That path then coming south and towards us this way, if you can mentally think of that, is already very close to the shared property line. And previously, the state forester had recommended, based on the health of that length of woods, to take a majority of it down to let it re-vegetate. It's my opinion and our engineer's opinion to recommend to the town to move the walking path back by about 50 or 60 feet along the same path, which we would pay for that expense to keep it farther away from the property line and also basically in the middle of the woods. And that's something that, um, I had asked the forester if there was going to be any problems with that. Also our wetlands ecologist, and there doesn't seem to be any problems that are sticking out to relocate the path. I think it's also an added benefit to the town because the path is already pretty close to the shared property fence. And by moving it, you're going to have a much better, uh, portion of trail. And you won't have to wait for any vegetation to grow because you'll already be in the grown vegetation area. And, um,
Makes sense.
That's my recommendation. You'll see it on the plan as a proposed path change. And you'll, you'll see the, the, the current path as it exists. And then the proposal that I'm putting forward. And I would recommend that even if the project didn't go forward, it would be better because you're farther away from the commercial property and their ongoing business. Um, other than that, I'm here to answer any quick questions about the format of the agreement, the updated offers that we're making, and then to talk about the, uh, the path idea because I do believe it is, uh, better for everyone.
Is there a drawing of that in the map that we haven't seen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it is clearly designated current, uh, path and proposed path.
So while I could not print it, I could easily forward that email that has that attachment. You could at least see it.
Yeah, I would like to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, which is just timing? When must you have some sort of written agreement in place with the town? Can you proceed with your application without it for now, or do you have a drop dead deadline for us to consider?
Um, we're moving along as quickly as we can with you through this agreement. The drop dead would be prior to construction.
So you don't need it for your application?
No, because we're in, uh, what I understand to be good faith negotiations to reach an agreement.
Yes.
And that's the statement that we're going to make in our, uh, application. And that, that fulfills that basic requirement.
Okay.
I have a question. Can I, can I ask a question, John?
Yes, of course.
Okay, yeah, uh, this, this, excuse me?
I'm just asking Alicia's permission and she says, "Go for it."
Okay, I'm going for it. Thank you, Alicia. Um, this used to be, this was a site of a, an automotive scrapyard, a junkyard. There are decades and decades that, uh, you know, cars have sat there and there, I'm sure there's a lot of automotive fluids that have spilled into the soil. Is there any kind of pollution remediation needed before you can work at this site?
Yes, this, um, if I can, am I, is there?
Right over here, just sit right here and face the camera.
Sure.
He's on the phone though. He can't see you anyway.
I don't have to see you.
I didn't realize there was the new camera working. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Will Vevay. To answer your question directly, this is a listed brown field. Uh, it is going through a full remediation cleanup as we speak through the BRELLA program. Through direction of the current new owners, which is, uh, GHR Recycling. And BRELLA is the Brown Field Reuse and Reclamation, uh, program that's administered by the state of Vermont. So when this project is finished, there'll be a full, complete remediation of the site from any of the known issues that it has now. And the solar portion of the project is part of its remarketed use, which is a portion of having it qualify for BRELLA. So as the developer on the solar side, I'm working with the new business owner and the state of Vermont to get it completely through BRELLA with all of the work that's required to receive a certificate of completion, which is ultimately what the project will, um, receive, as administered by the state of Vermont through all of the fully engineered work to remediate the site from its, uh, current status.
How long is that going to take? They're, they're still crushing cars down there.
They'll, they'll continue to crush cars, but they won't be storing cars anymore. That's my understanding from the, uh, current management.
Huh. Okay. Thank you then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You've answered my question. Thank you.
My question would be, back to this issue of deadlines, when do you hope to begin construction?
Um, in a perfect world, the end of next year. Um, it might be the year after. And that's due to the coordination with, uh, the BRELLA process.
Got it, okay. So we've got some, we've got some breathing room here.
Um, to get to a final agreement on this one portion, yes.
Good. Okay, well, thank you for letting me join you. Thank you, John. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye. Address everyone else. Any other questions while I'm here?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
What's the length of time now? At some time, is this solar field going to end and be put back into prehistoric conditions, if you want to call it that?
Decommissioning?
Decommissioning.
Yep.
Uh, or is this from now till water runs and grass grows?
No, there's an economic useful life of the project. I would estimate that probably 25 years. Uh, our agreement is a long-term lease with an initial term of 20 years with options to extend. And part of the permit has a decommissioning plan. And at the end of its useful life, we have to remove, uh, recycle the material and return it to the way it was before we started. So that will happen, um, at the end of the project's life.
So, and my, my question would be, uh, in this easement that you're going to get from the town if everything works, is there a termination date and a closeout date?
Yes.
Or, or is it going to be left open-ended? I mean, if it's 25 years, that's not very long. If it's 50 years, well, that's quite a bit longer. Uh, if it's forever, that's a long time.
Yeah.
Can I just add on to your question, Joe? Um, Joe, I think we'll confirm that, um, trees grow every day. And maybe every 15 years or so is the time to fend them out. Would you, how many times would you think you'd be coming to the town during this at least 25-year period to ask permission to cut additional trees?
Uh, once.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so to directly answer your question, it's a limited, non-exclusive easement that only starts if we build and automatically extinguishes when we decommission. So it is exactly tied to the operating permit of the project.
But the permit could be extended with new technology, with better, more, 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 um, efficient solar arrays, that kind of thing?
Not exactly, no, no. Once you're issued a permit to operate under a nameplate capacity of the system that we're operating, you can't enlarge it. So it can only live its life as that project. The only thing I could see potentially happening in like year 15, if panels became that much better and it was an economic benefit to replace the old ones with new ones, that would happen. But the project footprint would never be able to get larger. And under the current statutes, which I understand to not be changing, you would not be able to enlarge the project at all. And you can't have multiple projects on a single parcel. And this is also the, we're constrained by the size of that parcel. There's nothing else that you could do there. I hope that explains it.
But let's just say at 25 years, is there anything to stop you from replacing the panels and going for another 25 years without decommissioning? Let's just say for grins and giggles, the panels last 25 years. All your, rest of your infrastructure is all there. At 25 years, the way you're talking now, it will go away. But let's just say at 25 years, the cost of taking those panels off, putting another set of panels on, is there anything that stops you from going for another 25 years like that?
Our lease agreement with the landowner. So Vermont has written the net meter rules in version one to have this grandfathered clause of 20 years. In the new set of net metered rules, you're not grandfathered or guaranteed anything. They, Vermont could end the program, which we don't expect to happen, or it could continue on. But because we don't own the land and we're renting the land, once our lease term is up, we would have to renegotiate a lease. And we would have to still have an economically viable, uh, project with the equipment. And Vermont would hopefully still have the net metering program in place. I know that there's a lot of ifs there, so I can't give
Well, no.
an exact answer, but there is the possibility that it could go on for another 10 years.
So I guess my question for us is, if, if he has the option to renegotiate with the landowner to keep this thing going, that needs to be in this contract. Then if that happens, he has to come back to us and renegotiate again too.
Sure thing. And that's probably one of the things we'd ask our lawyer to maybe try to.
And we're open to that. This is just a draft.
Right, I'm just saying, it just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I can't, I can't believe all these solar fields, in 25 years, they're just going to go away because where's the power going to come from once they go away? I mean, maybe they'll be, yeah, maybe they'll have another way, but I can't, it isn't like they're all going to vanish in 25 years. We're still going to need power from somewhere.
I completely agree with you.
So I foresee them, once they're there, they'll be there for a while. They'll, technology comes up with another way.
And hopefully legislation follows through to keep the programs alive that help the whole system. That's, that's the hope.
Well, or the price will go up so that you'll be able to survive on your own.
That too.
We're not hoping for that. Well, either way, we're paying for it.
Honestly, I mean, this is back to what I was saying the last time. The, the whole push here is so that we can go to Ace Hardware, buy our solar replacement, everything and be doing it ourselves. And that's the kind of, the, the idea of subsidized technology is to make it normal so that you can afford it down at the hardware store. That's what I believe in. We're years away from that, but I think it's happening. And, you know, working with towns like you and landowners like them, we're one small project at a time making it happen. But to your direct point, we're willing to negotiate all of those points. And we'd be happy to come back to the table, um, and pay again if there was more life to the project than what we expected.
Yeah. I think we table it till we can at least see the map, so we can.
Yeah, my apologies on that.
We'll see the map and then we'll talk to our attorney, have him look over the document. We'll make our suggestions as to what we think the issues to be discussed are. And maybe he'll have some suggestions as well.
Yep.
Yeah, and in between that, I'm available by phone and on email. So I'll coordinate with John to get through any other questions with the attorney real quick.
Thank you very much.
Holidays, it's good to see.
Yeah, you too.
Hope you're all doing well and stay well.
Hey, have a cookie.
Thanks.
I can't, honestly. I just had my knees checked out and they said, "You gotta do..."
No cookie for you.
Alright, I guess now that we've heard from everybody that was in person, we should probably go back and get the town manager's report.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. I'll keep it quick. The town's new recreation director, Nelson Brown, reported for work Monday, December 14th. We're working to bring Nelson up to speed, both with regard to his new digs and available recreation resources and the initiatives he may wish to consider taking on as the town's economic development coordinator. He's already been in touch and met. taking on as the town's economic development coordinator. He's already been in touch and met with Bill Moore. He has cut plans to interact with the school principal and the school and the town librarian, Shelley Williams. And we're also going to meet with Lyle Jepson for economic development discussions as well. So Nelson seems to be taking to things very well. We're going to meet also with Randy with the few questions that have already emerged from his settling into that office. Cassella is expected to install concrete block over the next two weeks. And the steel structure is on order and expected to arrive in mid-January with regard to the salt shed project. Omea has generously offered to contribute $30,000 toward the cost of repairs to be performed this spring to the deck of the Kendall Hill Road Bridge. That work's going to be done by Daniel's Construction. So we thank our friends at Omea. And speaking of Omea generosity, our friends at Omea have confirmed that they are now in a position to sell the requested 1.9 acre lot on West Creek Road at, near the intersection with Kendall Hill Road for the site of the future relocated Florence Fire Substation. Omea tells us they will engage an attorney to handle the sale and they will be in touch with us as we go forward on getting a closing setup. They've agreed to our purchase price of $20,000. As you know, the town hopes to again relocate from the Omea facility to this new spot so we can respond perhaps to Omea issues and concerns from off-site, which we think will be a big advantage. And there'll be less conflict, we think, with Omea trucking in that new spot. So stay tuned for more on that. Finally, the town offices will be closed Friday, December 25, and again on Friday, January 1st in observation.
Internet crashed.
Russian hacking.
Who hit what button?
We're not, none of them. All of a sudden you guys were gone.
It's a state wifi.
So Dave was involved with his select board comments. Were you doing those?
I'm done now. Yeah. Unless these guys want to hear my comments.
Yeah, they weren't worth hearing.
You can read the minutes.
Got that one once in a while.
Exactly. No, I'm good.
I had some things that I actually was gonna, I had on my, in my notes from like last meeting and the one before, but on just some positive things that are going on in town. Winning Image won a economic development grant and that was through Lyle Jepson. So that was important to note because, you know, we pay into it and we're getting.
Getting something back out of it.
Getting something back. And then the Cluckin Cafe is pairing with an independent school in Polley to teach culinary skills. So that's cool. And then Ganya Lumber won the Forest Stewardship Council Leadership Award. Congratulations to responsible management.
Congratulations.
Joe, even, do you even know that, Joe?
Know that, Joe?
Ask Ken what the hell.
You're not being informed.
That's fantastic.
Good. Yeah, just a positive thing. So.
Yep, cool.
Why you came tonight, Joe?
I've got a question. If, if I'm out of order, it's not the time. Just correct me, but we're talking about fixing the, the bridge over there. How much money have we got left in our replacement fund? Are we in pretty good shape?
Well, I.
Did we take something out of it?
Depends what you mean by pretty good shape. We tap it on occasion for things like matches on grants.
Right.
Like salt shed, for example.
Yes.
We easily, I think after the salt shed, should have in the neighborhood of $175,000 in that fund. And the bridge repairs have been quoted to be something in the neighborhood of 125. Plus we're getting 30 from Omea. So we're not going to be in a, in the red, but we're going to be down to, you know, less money than we should have in it.
We're not creating ourselves a problem.
No, and I think whenever you're repairing a bridge, you're doing a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we had close to half a million in that account.
At one time.
Well, at one time, but we haven't taken that much out of it.
If you'd like, I can give you a.
Well, no, I just.
Where, where things have gone.
I mean, we've taken.
Taken a little and.
Taken a little, but the salt shed is at the most 100.
Right.
We threatened to take some that we never did too.
Right. So.
It's a, it's a good question. I can easily kind of give you a summary of what's gone into it, what's come out of it over the last few years.
I'd like to see that.
Don't we have like 400 and someone?
We should have 400 and something in it.
Well, the, the highway capital fund does.
No, but the, wow, the bridge fund. No.
Remember when we talked, when we did the Whipple Hollow Road Project, that fund, that project was funded to some extent by a $175,000 road grant.
Right.
Then we decided to use some additional money to deal with the West Creek Road reconstruction, which was not funded by anybody but our own money. We did not have a grant for that. We thought we're doing the two projects together. There's some benefit of going out to bid on both those projects together. Markowski gave us pretty good numbers and we got some Omea contribution on the materials in terms of discounted stone. So that was a, a pretty good chunk of change out of that fund for but I can get, I'll get you the report.
See that. I don't remember it that way.
Yep. Got it.
All right. Any public comments tonight?
Hi, Alicia.
Yeah.
Butch. Stephanie and I are here and I'm here for two purposes, but Stephanie's headed out the door, literally, I think.
Yeah.
We'd like, we'd like to talk about the, some of the provisions for, that the legislature has done for your, your town meeting this year. And I think this is probably about the time you should start thinking about this. Uh, because it's going to change the way you do your town meetings, uh, should you decide to do them remotely. And it's looking like now that that's going to be about the only option that you're going to have. So if, if you've got time for that, yeah, it might, this might generate some discussion and questions for you. Can we talk about that?
Yeah.
That's what I hear.
Thank you.
So. Butch, let me just say before I sign, I know you got a good review of us, you have a handle of it, but I did get a draft of this bill today and I sent it on to John and to Helen. So they both have a copy of that. And so if, John, I'm not sure if you were able to distribute it to the select board or not. But if there's, pardon me?
I guess I'd need to know a little bit more about exactly what you sent me because I do have some materials in tonight's packet about town meeting provisions that the legislature has passed. And I know tomorrow there's a VLCT seminar, which I'll be attending on the town's options in that regard.
Okay. Well, I sent you an email this afternoon. I don't know, maybe about three, two or three o'clock this afternoon, uh, because I had received a draft of the bill.
Okay. Why don't you explain it?
Well, okay. And it's, it's just a, it's, it's a short bill, but, uh, the, 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 the draft, the bill's short. And it just, as, as Butch was saying, it, there's, there's sort of three key pieces of it. One is the ability to, uh, for the town meeting date to be moved. The second is the ability for towns to, municipalities can authorize to mail out their ballots and for, and have an Australian ballot. And the last piece is for Secretary of State to make provisions to help out with the whole election procedures. So, but you might want to look at, look at the, the bill. It's quick, easy to read. And if you have any comments on it, then I'm happy to collect those and send them on to the people who are drafting the bill and they're making those.
My first question.
Comments.
My first question would be if we're going to convert to Australian ballot, what's the benefit of changing the date? Because the school district has already said they're committing to keeping the date.
Yeah, I would, I would say that that, if you were to, it probably is not a wise thing to change the date if a school district is not going to change the date because then you would have to have two different elections.
Right.
Right, Butch?
Yeah, I saw that. So to that, there are several communities in Vermont that have changed their charters to have town meetings on different dates. So they may want to look at moving those dates back into the more normal statutory specified town meeting day of the second Tuesday of March to align with their school, with their school budgets.
Yeah.
And I think Proctor is one, Brattleboro is one. There, there's a couple of other towns throughout the state that do that. So this would allow those towns especially to get in step with the rest of the state during crisis here.
And you'll see in your packet, an email exchange I had with Jean Collins telling us that they intend to keep their normal date, their normal week ahead of time, you know, presentation, which might be virtual as to, you know, description of their budget, but keeping their town meeting date. And suggesting that we should hopefully keep them in touch of what our plans are. I told her I would try to talk to her after our January 6th meeting. I'm hoping that by January 6th, we can make that decision ourselves and coordinate that and then prepare for the Australian balloting afterwards.
Right.
So are you, are you set, Steph?
Yeah, I, I am set. Is everyone pretty clear? We'll learn more on the VLCT conference about this tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm going to be on that.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome. Good to see everybody.
Thanks, Steph. So in, in addition to what Stephanie, Stephanie had just talked about, we do have current law. It's Act 162 that the legislature passed and the governor signed, I think in October. But this is, this is the start of your ability to have a, a virtual meeting. There's three pieces to the, to the bill. The two major pieces are you are allowed, and like Pittsburgh, uh, currently votes on your highway and general fund budget at your town meeting. This will allow, this bill will allow you to vote on those two budgets or any other items that you may or may not vote on a town meeting by Australian ballot. It doesn't require a charter change. It doesn't, this, this, this preempts out everything because we, we withstand 17 BSA 2680, which is, is voting at town meetings to allow you to do that. That's a decision the board will have to make, uh, whether they want to go that route or not. I would suggest that it might be a good way to go.
Another provision. What's, what's the option to that? Are there any options as opposed to that?
No, I don't see any option, John, especially, uh, you know, it doesn't sound like we'll be out of this COVID crisis until the end of the summer. So.
Right, right, right.
Think that a large gathering of 100 people probably in the town hall probably would work.
I'm going to do.
All right.
So then the second, the second provision in the current bill is, uh, and it probably will interest some members of the board and other people in town. See you, Steph. And, uh, the, is that you will, you will, if you're running for office, you will not be required to gather signatures on a petition. So the members of the board that are up this year, uh, your, your annual people, I, I believe probably your moderator and those types of folks. All they need to do, if they want to run, uh, they will, they need to come to the town clerk and sign a, a consent form to get on the ballot. And she has those. I talked to her yesterday. She's aware of this.
Yeah.
What that's going, what that's going to do, it will, it will eliminate, virtually eliminate, uh, writing ballots. Maybe, uh, or, or maybe not, depending on what the Secretary of State brings forward in the bill that Stephanie just talked about that's in development right now. However, any candidate for any office can just walk in, sign a consent form and they'll be placed on the ballot. The third piece of this is we'll allow, uh, the Secretary of State to waive statutory deadlines for some of your dates that you have to have in effect, and especially affecting the school districts, uh, whatever dates they applied, uh, with their articles of, of agreement. If they have different dates than Pittsburgh, than in our district, and I think all, our, our dates all align with, with, with the district. So that probably won't apply. And this also gives you the, uh, if you need to, the provision to waive the dates for your town meeting. But if you have a charter and if it's written in your charter, and I don't know if you have it, I don't know if you have a charter on this.
No charter.
No.
No charter.
So you just follow the state statute.
Yep.
Okay. And that's, that, uh, that, uh, that, that outlines the provisions of this Act 162. And as Stephanie alluded to, there will be, as of right now, there, there's no provision for the town to mail ballots to everybody like the state did during the general election. To allow that, that'll take an action of the legislature. And it sounds like there's some language in this proposed bill that may allow that. And what I heard yesterday from the Secretary of State's office was that will be at the expense of, currently that will be at the expense of the towns to do that, should you choose to do that. Although if people want an absentee ballot, uh, they're more than, uh, they're, yeah, they're more than welcome to request an absentee ballot and have, have them mail that to them in the, in the normal way. So we expect, uh, oh yeah, the other piece is the, the, the tabulators that you have will be, uh, available for, for, with a reprogrammed. I don't know if they use a prom, a chip or whatever they use to put in there to accommodate your town questions. And town questions only, town and school questions. So that, and again, that's another expense to the towns. So until the, the bill that Stephanie was alluding to, there, this is, it's in a formulative stage. No committees have met on this bill yet. The chairs are working on it. Committees can't meet because nobody knows who's on what committee yet, either in the House or the Senate. So, but the hope is to get this, that bill out within two weeks of, of, when we go back into session. I think that's a very quick timeline that may probably not be attainable. I would say maybe three weeks we could do it in, but the first week that we're in session, we don't do anything. You know, in lieu of other times when people think we don't do anything, but we really don't do anything. The first week it's all ceremonial. So, so it, I would say probably at least, at least three weeks after we reconvene. But we'll have something for you by the end of January, I'm sure. And you'll have some certainty by then on some of the procedures. But I'm thinking you all probably by before that, you'll want to make a decision on your town meeting and your, uh, when you write your, uh, you'll, you'll probably need to consider this when you write your warning for, for the town meeting. And that's kind of what I know about that so far. And things are developing as, as we move forward. We'll try to talk somebody into covering the cost and for the elections within the town. And we're thinking if Congress, uh, federal Congress ever gets off their duff and, and helps with a new COVID relief bill, there may be some funding available there to, to, to do elections. The Secretary of State also has a pot of money for elections that comes from the federal government. It was just a matter of freeing that up. So we're, that's where we're headed for, as far as elections go. Okay.
All right. Thanks, Butch. Do we have any other public comments? Do we have anybody for, um, the Kendall Hill Road Solar Project?
We're waiting, we're expecting Jake.
There's it right there, right?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Very good.
I know as well. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking some time to put this project on the agenda. Recognizing that it is, um, maybe getting a little bit later. I'll try to keep this quick. Uh, my name's Jake Clark. I'm a project developer with Encore Renewable Energy. Encore is a Vermont company based in Burlington. We've been around for about 10 years. We're up to around 15 employees, uh, most of whom are based here in Vermont. Um, we're up to around 15 employees, uh, most of whom are based here in Vermont. And we've built out maybe 50 or 60 solar projects across the state in, in the 10 years that, um, since we've got started. Um, I'll just say at the outset that I'm, I don't think there's a request for any action from the select board this evening for a couple of reasons. Um, I think it's a great idea for us to introduce the project to you at this time. And, um, you know, address any concerns and questions that, that you all may have. Um, the timing for this project, um, from the Encore side of things has, has changed a little bit. Um, I don't think that we'll be filing the petition for the Certificate of Public Good with the Public Utility Commission until, um, later in the spring or possibly even over the summer. We're getting more information about the interconnection costs from Green Mountain Power and our, um, sort of equipment, uh, you know, purchasing plans are, are changing a little bit right now. So there's a couple of details about the project that are still being worked out. However, um, when we do get all of the final studies together for that, um, Certificate of Public Good application, you'll receive a final application. And I will be in touch, um, with, with you or with the town manager there to set up, um, a subsequent communication before the final application is filed. Um, so with that, I'll just jump in and say, you know, uh, provide a quick overview of the project and then I'll, I'll pause. Okay? So the project is located along Kendall Hill Road, about halfway between, um, Route 7 and the bridge over Outer Creek there, which, which was the subject of some discussion, I think, earlier. Um, the project will consume or occupy about 10 acres of an existing hayfield on about a 140 acre parcel. Uh, the project consists of about 7,500 solar panels located on, uh, fixed ground mounted racking systems across 10 acres of the site. Uh, the, the panels are eight to 10 feet off the ground at their highest point. There's a, uh, seven to eight foot agricultural style fence that goes around the project. There's a perimeter fence. And, uh, we'll need to extend power, overhead power from Kendall Hill Road to the solar site. And there will be some, you know, associated upgrades, upgrades, um, of the existing three-phase power from the site to the substation in town. Uh, with that, I think I'll just pause and ask you all if you have questions or comments.
Can I just say one thing? Um, Jake, um, thank you for participating tonight. I know it's relatively, relatively early in the process still, but I do want to encourage you once again that when the time is right for you to be in touch with our Planning Commission Chair, Mark Winslow. And those are the folks that the select board often looks to as having technical expertise to evaluate these projects. So they meet on the fourth Thursday of every month. Their next meeting opportunity, I think therefore, would be January 28th. But it sounds like you may have any number of months, uh, before you submit that they might want to hear from you. So I just encourage you to do that. And you've already got his email address. I've given you that earlier today, right?
Correct, yes. And I will be in touch with them. And if, if they want to set up, uh, a conversation at the next available planning commission meeting, uh, we'll be happy to, to do that.
Okay.
Alright, any questions?
That's probably the way to do it.
Okay. Is there anything else? I guess we don't have any questions so far. Is there anything else you'd like to let us know?
No, just that, um, you know, we'll, we'll be preparing a, as part of the, you know, the full, I, I think that you all at the select board are, are um, familiar with the process, but we, we are required to prepare a full environmental, um, impact assessment and aesthetic impact assessment. We're required to assess the projects, um, whether the project, uh, you know, complies with the town plan and the regional plan as part of the sort of orderly development analysis. We'll conduct an acoustic analysis. Um, you know, we've already had our, um, our field, um, scientists out there to assess the site in term, in terms of, uh, what's there on the environmental side. We've got a, a, a good, um, understanding of what's on site. And, um, you know, I, I guess I'll just add there's, we've, we will be required to conduct that, um, aesthetic impact assessment and our preliminary analysis with the landscape architect we worked with. Um, they've advised us that, that we'll be planning to put in, um, a row of vegetative screening between the field where the solar project is located and Kendall Hill Road to help, um, sort of break up and soften any views of the project from Kendall Hill Road.
Okay.
So, as a, if, I'm, I'm open for questions, but if there are not any, I would, I would thank you all for your time. And, and, um, you know, we'll be in touch again when we have all of those final, all of those studies finalized.
Very good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Likewise.
Alright, so we have Lisa waiting. Alright, so we have, um, discussion regarding remote accessibility to lister card information.
And a couple other topics.
Hello, everybody. Uh, how, how, you know, how much do you want me to, uh, abbreviate this? It is getting a little late. Um, so I, I, John, did you get the, um, uh, the kind of summaries of?
I did, and I circulated that tonight. And so, um, the floor is yours. I know that you might think that we're old and tired, but besides the fact that we're old and tired, we would like to hear what you're up to and what you plan to be up to. So take as much time as you need.
Okay, I'm gonna do it in reverse order of the agenda then. I'm gonna start with, um, the work of the assessor's office, uh, regarding our, our budget moving forward and our, our plans for operation moving forward. So, um, in addition to the, the typical ongoing valuation work and, um, compiling the grand list, uh, every year, uh, we instituted some, and of course, the transitions that we've had of, uh, converting from listers to assessor, um, and, and all of that. It meant a lot of changes this year and then pile on COVID on top of that and not being able to get out and do, uh, inspections and meet with people and meet with people in our office, which presented another challenge. Um, but we have, um, we have instituted some new processes, um, uh, my, um, I, I have my own methods of doing things and I'm, I'm very much by the book of, uh, following the statutes and following best practices as far as recommended by, uh, PVNR. So, uh, one of the things that we've done is, um, refine the process of entering, uh, property transfer returns into the grand list. Um, and we've worked with Helen's office so that we have a system where we can reconcile those. And I've made sure that, uh, moving forward, we are following the effective dates where uh, sales transactions that happen for the 2021 grand list, sales transactions from 4-1-2020 to 3-31-2021 would fall into that. Uh, in addition, we've instituted a similar process for reconciling building permits to make sure that we have them. Um, and that people aren't kind of slipping, slipping through the cracks and we're, uh, you know, looking at everybody consistently and fairly that have changes going on with their properties. Um, corrections to current use allocations, uh, I reviewed all the parcels that we have in current use and we have quite a lot of them in Pittsburgh. I forget the exact number, but it's in the 70, 78 or something like that. Um, and have had to make some adjustments to make sure that those allocations had been, uh, calculated correctly according to, uh, Vermont statute regarding current use. Um, and personal property, um, was a bit of a challenge this year. I don't normally do personal property. I'm a real estate appraiser and I, I typically stay away from it. Um, I, I did get it done, uh, for this year and, uh, used, uh, advice from PVR to follow the model that, uh, was used in the past by the listers. But I, I strongly recommend that we review that and that you consider putting on the ballot a, an exemption, um, of personal property below a certain value. We're sending out tax bills for five and $10 and things like that. And it's probably not worth the cost of administration as opposed to the revenue we're receiving for that. So I want to pile a list for you and work with Helen to, to figure out where that breaking point ought to be. But I, I would strongly recommend that most towns that do, still do personal property, um, do have a, a lower limit. So they aren't, um, dealing with the, you know, pennies and nickels on, uh, on tax bills like that. Um, and without that town vote, you have to put, you have to list every value, even if it's a hundred dollars. You have to list it on the grand list for personal property. Um, due to COVID, uh, we had to learn to work remotely. Uh, the log me in program that I have where I can log into the assessor's computer from my home office, uh, was a real godsend, uh, during shutdown, uh, as well as currently while I'm recuperating from knee surgery and they won't let me drive. Um, I'm not gonna try because it's my driving leg that is, uh, so, so I'll be safe on that one. Um, but it's, I think that COVID has, um, for better or worse, has, has taught us a thing or two about working remotely and, um, the need to drive into a, a meeting, although in this case certainly to drive 10 minutes to Pittsburgh where 15 minutes to Pittsburgh would be a lot more friendly than, uh, meeting from my home. Uh, in a lot of cases, it behooves us to, to work remotely. Uh, and in the case of people doing research from the lister's office, getting a lister card, um, asking about the history of the assessments, uh, that can be done pretty efficiently, uh, via email. So we've, because of COVID and because of this kind of transition that was, that was happening naturally anyway, but it's kind of been accelerated due to COVID. Um, we have, um, you know, we're, we're contemplating or not complimenting, we are implementing, reducing, um, our office hours. In the past, we've, we felt that we should have Linda there, um, available for open office hours four days a week. Um, and, and I don't think there's really a need for that. I don't think it's very efficient. Um, so, uh, we're, we're planning to pare down Linda's office hours to one morning a week and my office hours to, uh, the Thursdays, a different, uh, uh, day per week. And we'll certainly work additional hours and Linda will continue her regular schedule of approximately four mornings a week. Um, but she'll be able to focus hopefully on, on projects like reconciling those building permits that she's been working on. Uh, working on the, getting the PTRs organized for me to do, uh, do data entry on that. Um, so I, I think that's, it's just the way we're gonna be doing, uh, business. And I think that's a, um, maybe I'll, I'll give you the opportunity to ask many questions that you'd like, but I think that gives me a segue into the, the GIS, uh, mapping um, that we're gonna talk about next. And any questions before that?
Nope.
Okay, exciting stuff, I know, in the assessor's office. Um, so the GIS, um, mapping has been, it was been, it was on the agenda and we kind of tabled it earlier in the year. There was the possibility of some COVID, uh, grants to get, uh, some of that done. Um, and I was made aware of kind of a longstanding history where the, uh, town of Pittsburgh and the select board particularly was a little bit reticent to share property record cards, uh, online. Uh, and honestly, I, I, I kind of shared that feeling maybe five, 10 years ago. Um, but times, times will change a, a, as it will, will, will happen. So a, at this point, um, I, I'd like to present you what is out there right now and, and what our options are. So, um, prior to my tenure in Pittsburgh, um, the, the town had been paying for one license for GIS mapping um, linked to the, the vision software, to the Kama software. So John Ujier was able to access that. Um, and to the best of my knowledge, he mainly used that to create like list of butters um, to a given property that was, um, applying for some kind of, of permit. Um, I don't know that it was used extensively for much else. Um, I, I assume if someone came in from the public and asked John to generate a map, he would have done that. Um, but it wasn't available online. It wasn't on a kiosk in the town clerk's office or anything like that. So somewhat limited use, although that a butter list is a pretty handy thing that, um, that, that you can do with GIS mapping. Um, now, a few years back, it, it was pretty uncommon. Uh, not even every town in Rutland County had formal tax mapping, uh, even on paper, but certainly very few had it on, uh, GIS, meaning you could, um, look at those shape files. They would be linked. You could scale in and out of the, the map. And, uh, I had hoped to show you some of this, um, on, on the screen. Um, so we'll have to leave that for another day. I'll be happy to show it to you some, at some point. Um, but at this point, Vermont has available through the statewide parcel mapping, uh, project, if you'll recall that, uh, where all towns were, um, given funds for this and, well, in a way, there was a little bit of arm twisting there. You were kind of compelled to do it. Let's, let's be honest. Um, to submit data to the statewide parcel mapping. So what we have now is GIS, uh, mapping that is available at the statewide, uh, level. So if I could show you that online, if we could share screen and, uh, no luck with that from Liz of figuring that out?
Uh, can you try actually, since we did crash? I mean.
Oh, I will give it a try. Let's see if I know how to do it. No, it's still saying host disabled.
Alright, it must be.
I'm trying to describe it to you. It's not as, not as good as a picture. Um, but you have the link in that handout. So, um, if you're so inclined, uh, you know, take a look at, um, uh, when you're, when you're home on your computers. Um, it's, it's pretty, um, pretty amazing, the data that is already out there on all of our parcels. So if I were to put my address in, I would see all of the, I would see the shape of the, the parcels that, um, that I own. Um, and I would be able to create a map showing my parcels outlined with the parcels that, uh, surround them. I could put various overlays on them, the Google Earth overlay, a topographical, uh, overlay and, um, and, and various things like that. And the data that's linked to there is everything in the grand list. So it's the amount of acreage, it's the, uh, land value, the building value, the owner names. And this is public record information, as is always the case with anything we do in, in a town office with our grand list or our assessment software. Um, but this is so widely available now, uh, with the state that it's used by a, a lot of people as an appraiser, a bank appraiser. I use it all the time. Zone, our zoning administrator, Jeff, uses it, um, pretty regularly to look at a property. It gives you, you know, really a bird's eye picture of things. And because it is public record and, uh, was recently updated, there are a lot of apps that are using it. You, you probably are aware of a lot of apps that link to Google Earth. Well, there's, there's one that I, uh, recently got on my phone. That's an app, uh, designed for hunters that links your phone's GPS to this statewide parcel mapping and allows you to know based on where you're standing in the wood, in the woods, on whose land you are standing. Provided data is good, it's garbage in, garbage out kind of thing. So you hope that the data is right that was sent from the town to the state. But anyway, that's the caveat with that. Um, but it's a, it's a very powerful tool. And now that that is available in such a usable format, um, some of the compelling reasons for wanting G, uh, GIS in our towns maybe are, um, are a little bit less. So I would like to discuss with you the, the, the things that might tip that, um, tip that scale to wanting, uh, our own GIS in-house in Pittsburgh. And the biggest advantage would be the ability to link property record cards and other, um, documents if you chose to down the road like surveys, deeds, um, you know, whatever information you wanted to link to that. Um, it, it's, uh, you know, it's becoming a world of, of data at your fingertips, uh, online. Um, so there comes the part of whether you wish to do that. Um, and again, if I could screen share, I could show you, Wes Rutland just recently did this. And it's, it's pretty convenient for appraisers and realtors and insurance agents and all these people that call in frequently or email in frequently and ask for a list. or email in frequently and ask for a Lister card. I can send them right to that site. They can print a map of the, the property as well as get the Lister card exactly as it would be if I printed it in the town office. So that, that's one thing that you cannot do with the, the state's GIS mapping. The other thing that you cannot do with the state's GIS mapping, although it kind of puzzles me why, is they won't, they don't have any intention of linking, excuse me, linking zoning map overlays to their GIS. So that would be a really nice thing to have, you know, again, in, in real time to be able to see that. As an appraiser or an assessor, it's certainly something, you know, I, I always need to look at when I'm considering the value of something. Well, what can you do with it? So maybe it has commercial value, but it's not legal to develop it commercially. So it doesn't. That, that kind of analysis that that we have to do. So, so those are the, those are the, the options you have in front of you for doing that. And I don't think it's any rush to make this decision right now. You can table it. And one thing I suggested to John was maybe give board members the opportunity to take a look at these different mapping tools that are out there and, you know, kind of process that. Be happy to chat with you and show you how they, they work.
Ask a question. Lisa, I think you probably told me, but I don't have it handy. Is there, tell us about the cost, at least in terms of a first time investment? And is there an annual maintenance cost to adopt this technology?
Yes, there are both of these and they are in addition to, we have a quote from CAI, which is the company that, that bought out Dean Russell's, Russell Graphics ma- mapping company that we had before. Now, we're not compelled, of course, to go with CAI. We did for this year because it was rather sudden that Dean retired and sold to CAI. So we, and they were honoring Dean's contract for that first year. So in addition to paying for the annual updates, which that's an absolute must and Pittsburgh has always done that. And and that's great. You want to continue to do that. You, there's no reason to stop that because a tax map is a living document. It, it's got to be updated on an annual basis. And also to send those updates to the state because again, this information is already out there online through VCGI with the state. And you want it to be accurate, you know, it's already out there. Why wouldn't we want it to be accurate? So the cost for the one-time setup of creating the GIS, I'm quoted 3,500. And I, I assume that quote is good for a while. I'm not sure how long, but it was certainly good for this fall. And then the current annual fee to, for them to continue to host and and maintain that GIS site, because again, that has to be updated on a regular basis, is another 3,500 currently for an annual fee. And again, that's in addition to, to your mapping costs.
So are you saying that we're already spending 3,500 a year for updates annually?
Yeah, that's, we, we need to negotiate a little bit with CAI. I've had this conversation with Mary Ann and Wes Rutland as well, where they, they promised us they were going to honor Dean's contract and Dean's price for the first year, but then it seems to be going up quite a bit in the second year. So again, we are not obligated. With CAI, they, having bought out Dean Russell, the two of them had the largest, together had the largest market share in in Vermont for tax mapping companies. So now CAI has, has the majority. But there are other companies we could, we could consider going with. It, it's, you know, it's certainly not, shouldn't be a given that they would get that contract because they bought out Dean Russell's work. You should entertain bids from other mappers if you want to go there.
So, so we could, if we wanted to, we could decide to do the one-time setup for the GIS and then either work with CAI or someone else on an ongoing basis thereafter.
You could, you certainly could. If you're going to do the GIS, I think I'd, I'd make the decision beforehand whether you're going to stay with CAI or you're going to go with somebody else.
Okay.
Every time you do a transition, they don't have that history of what you had done in the past and
Okay.
Things get, things get changed a little bit with, you know, a, a different, different company doing the work. I'd like to say they're all consistent, but, but they're not. The, the, the data that was sent to VCGI was a little different from one mapping contractor to another. But I, I won't go into the details unless you want me to with that. One of my pet peeves, to make it very short, is inactive parcels that I, I, I really feel it's imperative that they be mapped. So if I own a property that is comprised of three separately deeded parcels, I want to see those three separate parcels on a map so that I know as the assessor that those are three separate parcels. They're not one parcel. There are three parcels I can sell separately at any time. And tracking that information hasn't always been done consistently. And in fact, Pittsburgh hasn't really kept up with their inactive parcels at all. So that's a project I'd like to, I'd like to tackle time permitting as we move along. And and that would certainly be something that a mapper could help us to, to work on. But it would require some work out of my office as well.
It's not great probably to keep kicking the can, but it sounds like maybe one more step we ought to take is to get competing bids from CIA and whatever other agencies on the annual numbers together with the G P, GIS initial investment. So we know exactly what we're being asked to buy into, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. You never know. If it's an open competitive bidding process, maybe we'll get a different bid from CAI as well. So that's all I have. I'm not in a huge rush to, to get that done. So it's, it's certainly something we can discuss as we, and, and when we have an opportunity, happy to show, show you how all these mapping tools work if you want to kind of, you know, take a look at it and understand what the benefit is. There's some pretty cool stuff out there.
Who, who looks into these prices, Lisa or us?
It sounds like Lisa and I maybe will go out to bid.
Okay, all right, okay, good, yep.
Lisa, let me just say before you go, it's just great to have a professional in the office who knows what they're doing and is focused on giving us good value for our dollars. So I appreciate what you've done for us this last year and a quarter.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Nice working with all of you.
Oh, God, I guess so.
All right, we've been all over the place, let's say. We just go back up to the top and see what we missed.
He's going to talk about the fence bids.
So let's do that.
Yeah, might as well do that now then.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hi Nelson, are you awake over there?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay.
Okay, good. Madam Chair, Rob Ketchum is the chair of the Recreation Committee. And he understands that the fence now in place, separating the swimming area from the rest of the recreation area is showing its age. It's 50 years plus. God bless Butch Shaw. I think he tells me that he was involved putting it up, but since that time, we've extended it, we've patched it. And it probably would be better to replace it after 50 years of excellent service. And so with that in mind, Rob and I worked on putting a request for bids together. And we were pleased to see four companies bid on the project. And the low bidder, as you can see from your packet, was Middlebury Fence, which came in about a thousand dollars less than the other bidders. And we can do the project, of course, as soon as weather allows, hopefully before the busy period and, and day camp. So maybe we're talking in the April timeframe, give or take.
And that, the thousand dollar less, it all, it included disposal though, right?
As I confirmed that with them, because I didn't see it.
I know, it wasn't listed.
I didn't explicitly see it in their write-up, so I emailed and confirmed that that is their intention.
Okay, great.
So now, does the cost of this come out of the rec departments? Do they have money for this?
And Pat has confirmed for us that we have about $20,700 in what is called the capital account for the rec department. It used to be called the mower replacement fund. But over time, we've collected, we've put $4,000 a year aside and we haven't had to use it as much as we thought. So that leaves us with 20,000 and change with no immediate needs to deal with the mower. So we converted that to what is a generic capital account.
I would add Middlebury Fence is a excellent company.
Yeah.
I would agree. By the way, there's another, there's other ways we can deal with that expense. We've also talked about the money we have saved by not having a rec director for many months. And we talked about two options, either to put some of that aside for rec area capital purposes and/or economic development expenditures. So that would be another pocket to pull the money from. But I think the capital account makes as much sense as any.
Well, that's where we should take it out of, yeah.
Butch, do you remember putting that fence in?
I think I helped you. I'm not sure.
Take us down memory.
We got a, we got a bunch of used chain link from FR Lafayette in Burlington. We, it was a community effort and that was, and I hate to age myself or yeah, it was a great project. We had a lot of fun doing it. Yeah.
Nelson, do you have any thoughts one way or the other about it?
No, that sounds great. I remember, I think it's what, 15, is it 15 years plus, the age of that fence?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty, oh my God, yeah.
Different five.
Yeah. Yeah, getting it in before summer would be, would definitely be ideal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll, well, I'll make the motion that we use Middlebury Fence and we take the money out of the rec department's capital fund.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Do you have a dollar out?
Yes, I do. Thanks for asking. It is Middlebury Fence and the number is $8,678.39.
Thank you.
You're about a thousand cheaper than the next bid.
All right, now moving back up. Sorry. No, no, thank you, Greg. No, I appreciate that you pointed out. Update on highway department truck order.
Yes, I'm just very thrilled to report that Selectman Mills and Hooker met together with Chad Ujier and myself and a couple of representatives of Kenworth. And Kenworth agreed that they would reorder the truck for us with the windows that we requested and with a set of rails that would better accommodate the body that Viking Sevius is going to put onto it. We've run their adjusted order form along to Viking and Viking seemed to feel confident that they could marry to that new apparatus much better. And the timetable seems to be the same, February, which is about the time we were expecting the other truck. So the customer is always right. It just goes to prove that hopefully we'll have a good, healthy relationship with Kenworth for many, many years to come. We appreciate what they've done for us. No.
I would like to reiterate that. I mean, I think they were very, they were very fair with us. So.
Very pleased with the negotiation.
Yes.
Because that window option was a little more money.
That was about six or 700 bucks.
I don't know the difference in the frame, whether it would make any difference, but the frame will make a big difference. Frame was a huge difference.
That was the problem.
That was the big problem. I mean, the windows are a safety issue, obviously, but the frame, once Tom and I went and looked at it, it's, the, yeah, the frame's a big deal, I think.
The frame is more for the application.
It's coming on. Yeah, you've got something to mount to versus having to go back to the, well, the middle or even behind the front wheels to mount and try to come forward.
It's the wrong setup for what you were doing.
It was, it was, yeah.
I think we've learned some lessons about that.
We did. Yes, it, hopefully, we'll see you the next time.
That's true.
All right, and then update on the sale of the old ladder truck.
Yes, I'm pleased again with Selectman Hooker. He's doing great work. He did a fantastic job negotiating within his delegated authority from the select board and was able to achieve a purchase price from the Brandon Fire District for our used truck of $75,000. We have received the check today and tomorrow. And tomorrow, I will get that into the fire department's capital account. So that's just wonderful news and it couldn't be any better because the new truck comes Friday.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Win-win.
Yeah.
Plus, another thing is we didn't have to advertise it.
Right.
It's going to stay local.
It came together better than you'd expect.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
I guess also our, our good luck was to have Mike Markowski involved since he's familiar with both departments.
He's familiar with both departments and was very pleased that we're able to agree on it. But we did.
So are they going to dedicate it to him?
I don't know.
All right, execute 30-day notice letters to owners of properties with junk ordinance violation.
Yep, the junk ordinance does require a 30-day notice from the select board to the violators. We've identified three violators on Fire Hill Road. And those people are listed on the three notice of violations that we've drafted up. And with your signatures, we will get those out. That'll start the 30-day clock ticking, after which we can start writing tickets.
Okay.
Now, have we seen any improvement, any of those properties since we've started this process?
Yes, but there's been backsliding on all of them.
On all of it, yeah.
There's kind of a cat and mouse game with regard to junk vehicles on the Wayne and Artie Forest properties where they will say good things and make some moves, but then stash vehicles here, there and elsewhere. And then get more overnight. So that seems to be a recurring kind of situation, unfortunately. And the same is true with Ashley Forest with regard to the litter and junk on her yard. She has said some good things to me and there was some good compliance about a year and a half ago, but a lot of backsliding. And I think we do need to go from honey to vinegar.
Have they been made aware these letters are coming?
No.
Oh.
They'll get the notices and that might generate some more conversations, but I'm not going to take those conversations very seriously because we've had them before.
Okay.
Yeah, and not too long ago.
Right, right. I'm sorry about, I'm sorry to be that way, but I think we've learned some lessons on this one as well.
I think we'll have more to hear, I think.
A long time.
Long time.
So we do have Butch still on the line. You might want to go to the Act 102 discussion while he's here.
102, not 120.
Great.
All right, Butch, do you want to talk about 102?
Well, I I, I did present it to you at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And asked you to mull over your decision on that on that abatement for COVID-related tax appeals and for the penalty and interest. And so I guess tonight, it's up to you folks whether you would allow the Board of Civil Authority to consider that provision. By statute, we cannot consider that provision unless the board, your board authorizes it. And before you get into that discussion, just want to remind the board that at 6:30 on the 28th, we're going to have a Zoom.
Joe. Sorry, Butch.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's 6:30 on the 28th of December, we'll be having a Zoom meeting of the Board of Civil Authority sitting as the Board of Abatement. And our, our three requests that we originally started with are now up to nine for various abatement reasons. for various abatement reasons, one for others. I have just signed one, I guess I'd better look again.
Yeah, so just as Butch said, the legislature has given the Select Board the power to abate penalty and interest for delinquent taxes. And I, I, I think that if the board wants to develop a policy, it should be carefully guided and limited to the situation for which the legislature gave you that authority, which is to deal with the COVID pandemic. I think Butch has correctly said that out of the nine pending applications, only one has cited COVID as the basis for their request. We've already collected an awful lot of penalty and interest after taxes were due. And to develop a broader policy would create some real chaos and refunds and such and this. So I think if the board wanted to develop, develop a policy in which should carefully crafted to say, we are willing to consider at least at the Board of Abatement, those requests that reference COVID-related issues. That'd be my recommendation.
I, I would concur with that. I think like Butch has said, it is only for COVID. And if you've got one person who has said it's for COVID, that's fine. The others, if they aren't saying it's for COVID, we shouldn't be doing it.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
That makes sense.
Do you want to develop a motion and develop that policy?
John, can I say one thing in regards to what David just said? We are, and Dave, we are limited by statute as to what we can consider for abatement. We'll have to consider everybody. The only option we have on this is if the board says no, we don't want to take COVID into, in, in, into consideration, the board will not hear that appeal. The other eight appeals we'll have to hear because they're not COVID-related.
Oh.
Oh, so you're going to hear them anyway.
Okay.
Because there's various, there's various, I won't say, yeah, there's various excuses for, for not paying their taxes on time and whatever in the board. Those come under, I think it's five positions, provisions in the statutes that we can consider. But a COVID consideration is not statutorily allowed unless you, you let this be allowed here.
I see.
Motion to do that.
Right, in addition to what you already have the power to do.
I would make a motion that we would allow COVID to take place at the.
Allow COVID abatement?
Right, allow the COVID abatement.
Or allow for a consideration of.
A consideration of a COVID abatement, still doesn't mean we have to abate it.
Doesn't mean you've got to do it.
Right, at least we can add that to our list of considerations. I will second, yes.
All right, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So the Board of Civil Authority would like to thank you for kicking the can.
We're all on that board, right? So we just.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, review the fourth draft of the budget.
Yep, over these last few weeks, we've done very little in the way of tweaking the numbers. And as we move forward, we're pretty much at balance on all five budgets. General Fund, Highway Fund, Village Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund. And obviously, there's at least a couple more meetings by which we can choose to adopt the budgets and/or present any suggested changes. But that's, I guess, the short version. The most recent things I've seen that we can further tweak are that there's about eighteen hundred dollars of savings that we can limit the general fund four thousand dollar deficit down to about two thousand now. So it's just peanuts. One is which, one is that there'll be some savings, further savings that we've recognized in the rec department. And another, there's been a thirteen hundred dollar reduction in the annual mosquito district dues.
Oh.
That's the dues.
Yeah.
So how, as far as funding, are we level funded?
Yes, the assumption for all highway and general funds were that we would be looking to, to level fund. So even with level funding, we're very close to balance. And I'm expecting that by the next meeting, I will present you with balanced budgets.
Yeah, because I mean, the state's talking nine percent educator, which I don't get because I read where Rutland, one of their budgets is down a million dollars. So why are all these other schools getting more when they're able to, I, I don't. So I think.
Build a twenty million dollar school and we're going to pay for it.
We're going to pay for it.
Who's going to build it?
Burlington.
Chatham County.
And we're going to have to pay, we're going to pay our share for that.
Are there any other things, John, that we have no control or that will shit up on us?
Well, of course, we're always fighting inflation, we're always fighting the medical costs and the wages. But I don't think, the good news is we can do it this year. And I think if this is a year to do it.
This is, no, this, it'd be nice if we could go lower, but at least if we're level, I'm, I can live with that.
Well, I'll be happy.
I think so.
Wow, as happy as they can be.
Minimally unhappy.
Minimally unhappy.
We level fund a lot of.
A lot of years. There was a five or six-year period early on.
We level funded and then it caught up when it was bang. So some things you have to adjust, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
It really kicks you in the teeth that seventh year, whatever it was.
People salt to spread on the roads, we should give social.
You should go back to the days when everybody plowed their section of the road and maintained it, you know?
Sidewalks and roads.
It was a lot, yeah.
What sidewalks?
Is that it? I think we hit on everything, right?
We get all that stuff now?
Pretty, but we did it.
We did it.
And there's no one to say goodbye to, everyone's off.
Everybody was.
Everybody will, oh geez.